I'd like to call the meeting to order. The Board of Commissioners of ByState, Friday, April 23rd, 2021, at 8:30 a.m. Myra, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Zimmerman. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Pastello.
Present.
Commissioner Galladay.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Beach.
Present.
We do have a quorum present.
Thank you. The first item is if any comment cards were submitted for today's meeting. And if there are.
Chair, no, I'm sorry. No speaker cards were submitted for today's meeting.
Thank you. It's my understanding that at least one of our commissioners will not be able to attend the entire meeting today. So therefore, with the board's permission, and if there are no objections, I'd like to take the agenda out of order and address items under Agenda Item Number 12, the operating in capital budget for 2022 through 2024, and 13, which is the resolution in support of President and CEO, as the next items of business. Are there any objections? Hearing none, we'll move to Item Number 12, which is the ByState Development Operating in Capital Budget. It's included in your board packet, and I would ask for comments from CEO Talby Roach and from Tammy Fulbright.
Thank you, Commissioners. Of course, we're moving forward on our next budget cycle. Now, I want to mention that with your approval of today's budget item, then we will move into the subsequent discussions with each one of our funding partners. These are detailed and involve not only negotiations with myself, but also Tammy Fulbright's done a great job of working with all three funding partners, including St. Clair County, the City of St. Louis, and St. Louis County. There's a slight delay, as obviously we have a new administration in the city. However, it's very key that we move forward in a timely fashion, and we intend on doing so. I will note that this is now the third fiscal year under my administration, and we have achieved an annual growth rate, average annual growth rate underneath, 1.5%. And that is the pursuit of reasonable budgeting over time, and I want to commend really staff for doing that. I challenge staff every year with keeping our costs under control, and they've done an excellent job there. Tammy, just as our new CFO has led us through this process very strongly, I'm glad to see her here this morning, and she's done a great job of moving this through our different funding partners and negotiating with, of course, staff with all of the individual line items. Tammy, do you have any additional comments?
You're on mute.
I do not have any additional comments, other than to just thank the staff again for all their help with this. It really helped a lot that they're engaged in and working with us on this.
Talby, this is Trey Beach, Chair Winmiller. I just want to verify, confirm for those that may be listening on Facebook Live, the three local funding partners are St. Louis County, St. Clair County, Illinois, and St. Louis City, correct?
Yes, sir, that's right. And we do regularly meet with the individual staff members of that individually with, for instance, in St. Clair County, the Transit District with Mr. Sharkey. There's a lot of one-on-one meetings, not only with Mr. Sharkey and myself, but also with Tammy. This is an ongoing issue, so specific to St. Clair County. In the county, we work with both the county council. For instance, I met with Chris Grant Howard, the Budget Director for the council, yesterday, and of course, with Paul Kreidler. Tammy has met with him on several occasions. But now, we do move into a new process with the city, and we're a little behind on that, Commissioner, as we had a new mayor sworn in on Tuesday. But that is correct. Those are our main funding sources.
Those three.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from board members about the proposed operating in capital budget? This was covered extensively in the last finance meeting, and all the materials, including the background, supporting documentation is in your board packet, but I want to make sure that if anyone has any questions, to raise them now, because this will be something that we vote on. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Myra, is this a voice vote or a roll call?
I'm sorry, a voice vote's fine.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The next item is a resolution affirming support for President and CEO Talby Roach. I would ask Commissioners Beach and Pastello for comments.
I think the resolution, which I helped compose with the attorney who did all the boilerplate stuff, and the cover letter edited and written by Commissioner Pastello, who can speak also to this issue, kind of speaks for itself. Given some media attention recently, I think it's important for the board to reaffirm its confidence in our President and CEO at this time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Commissioner Pastello, do you want to add?
No, I think that was well said, Commissioner Beach. I think that the memo putting this forward and what we're asking you to vote on in and of itself speak for themselves, and I agree with my fellow commissioner. I think it's important for us to express our support and confidence in our CEO.
Thanks to both of you. Are there other comments or questions from the board members?
This is Commissioner Simmons. I agree with both Commissioner Pastello and Beach. I think this is something that needs to be done to where we can move forward with future plans that Mr. Roach has outlined, and I'm very supportive of his action in the past and looking forward to the future of working with him.
Thank you. Other comments? I will just say that I agree, first of all, I fully support the resolution. I appreciate that we are having this conversation at this time. I think it's imperative as a board that we recognize the quality of the CEO's integrity, his actions. We, as a board, support him. These are all important things that I think the public has a right to know, and I'm glad to reaffirm that. So, hearing no other comments, I would ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. At this time, we'll move back to our regular agenda, and I would ask for, we will now be on Item Number Four, which is the approval of the minutes of the February 19th, 2021 Board of Commissioners' open meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Item Number Five, the approval of the minutes of the March 19th, 2021 Special Meeting of the Board. They've been provided for your review, and if there are any corrections, please bring them forward now, otherwise I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Item Number Six, a report from the President. Talby, do you have some comments for us?
I do. Thank you, Chair. So first of all, I'm humbled by the resolution. I'm very grateful for the support that this board has given me, and of course, the whole organization. Of course, one of the biggest things is that we are challenged. We're challenged at this time. Currently, we have a reduction in ridership based on pre-pandemic of roughly 50%. The challenge to us is how we will regain that 50%. And one of the things that I've done, and that I need your help with, is we are going to challenge staff at looking at our capital budget and shifting that to how do we regain that 50%. And that would be through innovative programs and changes that we should make to the system aimed at regaining those customers and regaining the confidence of the public. It's time for bold action. We're going to have to do those things and lead our city and our transit system into something that's new. I am confident in our staff and my ability to do this, but I will certainly need your support. I'm humbled that I got it today and that I've got it since my tenure here, but we will have to make hard decisions and will have to be bold, and I plan on doing that. One of the ways that we will be doing that is pushing our normal capital budget from a 36-month aperture to a 60-month aperture, looking at the differences in rolling stock, in security infrastructure. All of those aspects are on the table. They're on the table because half measures should be put aside. We need to look at this boldly so that we can show the public that we're willing to adapt and adjust. Adapt and adjust to a version of the city that is based in 2030, not 1996. So I really appreciate your support regarding that. Also, as you know, we are moving through the highly enhanced retirement option for many of our legacy employees. It's a bittersweet day, as we have employees who will be retiring with decades of experience, and we will miss them, there is no doubt. But as an organization, we should always be looking for that innovation for how are we adapting and turning into what we need to be. So we want to do both things. Celebrate those folks who have had decades of experience with us and have meant that we have a legacy now to build on, but also who are the new folks who will now step in and perform and bring the company where they need to be. So I want to celebrate both things. Celebrate folks like Larry Jackson, who's done a great job and has had now decades of experience leading our administrative department. But now, move into the new leaders. The new leaders, the Tom Curran's, the Tammy Fulbright's, the Jessica Meford Millers, who will be leading our organization in a new way, in a version of 2030. This will require us to really look at things new, and I will be challenging you. One of the challenges that I am just compelled to show you is we just recently got another Metro Security Card. This is the latest version. We now have eight of these security cards, all of them showing progress. Remember, there was 99 points on the Metro Security Card up through the WSP study, which is overseen by our partners at East West Gateway, Jim Wilde and Marcy Maestri. They have been invaluable partners and even critics at how we can make progress. Folks, what I'm telling you is that we are making progress. Even if we do things perfectly in safety and security, there still will be individual incidents that we cannot, that unfortunately, we cannot prevent. However, are there indicators that we have structures and relationships in place that will change safety and security on MetroLink and MetroBus? Folks, what I'm telling you is that the evidence shows that we will, and we are. And what I need from this board is to join me in commending the people who have made this happen. Kevin Scott and Vern Summers, in particular, have done a wonderful job at moving safety and security forward. We have strengthened our partnerships with our police partners. Remember, three years ago, if you had asked our police partners, how were we doing in security? I don't think any of us would have been happy with what the answer would be. But I would challenge you to ask any of our partners, St. Clair County Sheriff's Department, the City of St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department, or St. Louis County Police Department, what they think of how security is going on MetroLink. I think resoundingly, the answers would be positive. Albeit, yes, we have work to do. We are far from finished, but the evidence is that we're moving forward, will continue to move forward. I want to thank you for your support, and if you happen to see Kevin Scott, Vern Summers, please recognize their hard work. Really appreciate the board's support, and that concludes my remarks. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Talby. Are there comments or questions from the board members?
Yes, first of all, thank you for that, Talby, and we certainly agree with you that the leadership deserves to be commended for that. We discussed at the last meeting some of the challenges with communication. Could you again summarize what those key challenges are with the dispatchers and where we're at and what we might be trying to do as we move forward, just so that that is crystallized in the summary from your perspective?
Yes, so there's no question that the ultimate goal would be to have a full PSAP kind of organization that, right now, we would like to have based at the Emerson Park location in a cooperative agreement with all three police departments. That's the ultimate goal. I have not been able to get there yet, because it does require that we carve coordination with all of those police partners. But we do have the structures in place to make that happen. I think part of gaining the confidence of our police partners and showing, for instance, things like the scorecard working and having, for instance, I would note that all of our police partners are currently under contract. None of them were under contract, and there was a problem certainly with confidence and trust. But I think we've rebuilt that, and now we could move forward on what would be the goal of a full PSAP located in East St. Louis, coordinating all three police jurisdictions. We're not there yet. We do have some interim steps, however, that we have turned on, and there's much better coordination through the radio systems, but it is not perfect yet. So we're showing progress, but I haven't reached the full goal of a full PSAP at Emerson Park. Some of the, for instance, Commissioners have jumped in and helped me with this. I know, for instance, Commissioner Simmons has been, and for instance, has a much deeper technical knowledge of these issues than I do, and part of that is being sure that the infrastructure would be available along with the money to build a project in Emerson Park. But we need to bring our partners, in that case, St. Louis County Police Department, so that they have confidence in the system that we build. It's true, we're not there yet, but I think we do have the road to get there.
Thank you for that answer, and thank you for your efforts to get to the ultimate goal.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Other comments? Just briefly, I wanted to say congratulations to all those who are retiring. Thank you for your service. I wasn't, I've been on the board for a relatively short amount of time relative to some other Commissioners, Commissioner Galladay, Commissioner Brown, but I did want to say that I've enjoyed working with the staff, and I appreciate all the hard work that they put into making a public transit system what it is. And welcome to the new folks. You have your, work cut out for you, but the board is here to support you, and I really appreciate your efforts. Talby, I did want to say that the communications piece is such a sensitive subject, and so it would be very helpful if you and Kevin and Vern could keep the board updated really regularly about this, because it's something that I think all of us as Commissioners get asked about. And so, any movement, positive movement, that we can emphasize and support, I would like to be able to do that. So that might be something that we just consider to do at every security meeting, and I'll defer to Herb on that, but certainly in every board meeting.
Well noted, and I'll ask Mr. Scott specifically to give a briefing at our next security meeting.
Thank you. I think the next item on the list is on the agenda is reports from the Operations and Audit Committee. I will say you're going to hear from me a lot today, because Justin is not going to attend today's meeting. He had a conflict, and so he's not here, so I'm going to give the report of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee for him. A meeting was held of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee on March 19th, immediately following the Board of Commissioners' Special Meeting. The draft minutes of the meeting are included in your board packet under Item Number Seven. The AFA Committee is introducing five items on the consent agenda for your consideration today under Item Number 11, with the committee's recommendation of approval. Those items include the sole source stockless office supplies Resolution Number 1115, the contract award third-party administrator claim services Resolution Number 1116, the contract award for occupational medicine, which is 11, Resolution Number 1117, Board Policy Section 70.050 Employee Pension and 401K Retirement Savings Plan Chairperson Appointment Resolution 1118, and the contract awards for general legal counsel services Resolution 1119. At the March Committee Meeting, a presentation was made regarding the FY 2022 budget, which is also on the agenda for approval at today's meeting. Actually, we've already done that under Item Number 12. And at the March Committee Meeting, several informational items were presented, including the quarterly financial support, I'm sorry, quarterly financial statement for the second quarter, the treasurer's report, the procurement report, the pension plan 401K Retirement Savings Plan and OPEB, and the internal audit staffing update. A written report of the AFA Executive Session Meeting, which was held on March 19th, has also been provided in your executive session materials. That concludes my report for the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting. Any questions or comments? Hi, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm going to move on.
Chair Winmiller, can I just, excuse me? Can I just note that Commissioner Brown just joined us via telephone, so that's who that was. Good morning, Commissioner Brown.
Good morning.
Great, welcome. Welcome, Vrenell. Good to hear.
Sorry, I've been struggling trying to get through with this number. I finally connected.
Glad you were able to make it.
Yes, thank you.
Sure, just to update you on where we are on the agenda, we took a couple, we took a couple of items out of order, but we're now on the report of the Operations Committee, which is Agenda Item Number Eight in your board book.
Okay.
A virtual meeting of the Operations Committee was held on April 8th, 2021, following the Safety and Security Meeting. The draft minutes of the meeting are included in your board packet today under Item Number Eight. The Operations Committee is introducing four items on the consent agenda for your consideration under Item Number 11, with the committee's recommendation of approval. These items include the contract modification bus type signage replacement project, which is Resolution 1122, the single bid track system upgrade Resolution 1123, the sole source contract authorization for the professional engineering services Phase One Engineering and Design Support Services Rehab of the Metro Cross-County Extension Tunnels and Stations, Resolution Number 1124, and the contract award for cleaning of railcars at Missouri and Illinois MetroLink Maintenance Facilities Resolution. That's Resolution 1125. There was an additional item, which was an MOA with the St. Louis County regarding compliance with COVID-19 vaccination dispensing guidelines, which was approved by the committee, but the item has been removed from today's consent agenda due to a change in the administration of this contract, so that will be brought up at a different meeting. In addition, at the April Committee Meeting, an operations report was provided by Jessica Meford Miller, Executive Director of Metro Transit. We did not hold an executive session, and that concludes my report of the Operations Committee meeting. Are there any questions? Comments? Hearing none, we can move on. We are now, I would now ask for a report of the Safety and Security Committee meeting from Commissioner Simmons.
I thank you, Chair. The open session, a virtual meeting of the Safety and Security Subcommittee was held on April the 8th of 2021. The draft minutes of the meeting are included in your board packet today under Item Number Nine. The Safety and Security Committee is introducing two items on the consent agenda for your consideration today under Item 11, with the committee's recommendation of approval. Those items included Item 11, under F, Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Normandy, Missouri Police Department for Secondary Police Officers Resolution Number 1120, under G, Law Enforcement Service Agreement between ByState Development Agency and St. Clair County, Illinois for services provided by the St. Clair County, Illinois Sheriff's Department Resolution Number 1121. In addition, at the April meeting, status updates were provided by Stephen Berry regarding the changeover from the UCR, the Unified Crime Reporting, to the NIBRS, updates to working documents of the PT, ASP, the SSP, and the EOP, and training. Discussion was also held regarding the status of security communications. There was no executive meeting held. This concludes my report for the Safety and Security Committee. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there any adjustments to the consent agenda from any of the board members? Hearing none, a motion is needed to approve the consent agenda as presented. The items are listed in your agenda. They were also outlined in the reports of the committees, and they're from A to K. If there are no adjustments, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the discussion regarding the ByState Development Agency Compact Agreement. I would ask Talby Roach and Barb Enkin for comments, please.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Of course, what we're trying to, is we were assigned by you to take a look at the ByState Compact. In summary, what I believe when we were looking at this issue, there was a singular issue having to do with updating the compact associated with what are our current operations. There's no question that it is a dated agreement that is not completely in compliance with what we are doing, and what you all asked us to do is to try to look at it more in its entirety. So if we're going to take a look at one or two sentences of the compact, indeed, we should maybe take a look at it and how it completely flows and works with how we do business. So I did ask Barb to prepare a memo to that effect, and that is in your board packet for review, and we have it in front of you today. Barb, do you have any additional comments?
Just that the memo that's included in your board packet today kind of outlines the process that we will be going through, not only to review the compact, but also what would be needed legislatively to move forward to actually make any changes. And so, one of the things that we will do is that we will look to other interstate compact agencies. compact agencies, particularly those that are engaged in transit, and use those as maybe a guide or some information to update our compact, since it really has not been thoroughly looked at since its origination 70 years ago. So this is a good opportunity to also look at the whole compact and see if there are areas that need updating and, you know, other aspects as well.
Are there any questions?
Questions or comments from the board? The one thing I will say is when I reviewed this piece, it's quite lengthy in terms of what we'll need to do to not only, you know, recommend potential changes to the compact, but that's the tip of the iceberg, so to speak, because actually being able to get approval, to do that will require, I hope, we all read this, will require a significant amount of time because it has to be changed. The language has to be changed in both Missouri and Illinois, and then it goes to Congress. So I think it's really important that we do this. I will say, I think it will be a lengthy process, and some of us might not even still be on the board if and when this should happen. So just trying to manage expectations there.
Yeah, and then just to, if I can, to piggyback, Chair, on what you said, and this ties in, I think, with what our CEO said earlier about no half-measures. We've got to look at things holistically and not be afraid to take big steps. So I applaud everyone involved for being willing to dive into this, and like you said, for taking steps at, looking at this compact that we might not even see bear the fruits of while a lot of us are on this board, but it's important to start, and I hope we can all do our part to see this through.
Appreciate the comment. I'm actually, as Chair, going to form an ad hoc committee to review the agency compact agreement and to make recommendations to the board regarding possible changes. In order to do this, I'll need a motion and a vote, and as Chair, I will make appointments to that ad hoc committee. I would, of course, welcome any input from any of you on that committee, but particularly if you have interest in working on this, please let me know, and you'll have a special seat at the table on the actual committee itself. So may I have a motion to appoint the ad hoc committee to the Bi-State Development Agency to make recommendations to changes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. I will try to make the appointments to that board fairly quickly, so please let me know if you have any interest in serving. Is there any unscheduled business?
Chair, I do not, except with the one exception of Jessica, if necessary, we could just, an explanation on the vaccination. As you know, these are moving targets, and I did ask her to be on the call just in case there was some questions about pulling that one vaccination. And I know it's of interest to the board. We've been very active on the vaccination events. Chair, do you mind if Jessica just give a quick update on that?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you. As you know, vaccination for our team members and also providing access for the public to COVID-19 testing and vaccination is an essential component of our pandemic recovery planning efforts. We're working closely with St. Louis County to schedule vaccination opportunities for our team members, but also their household members and our retirees in the month of May. In working with St. Louis County, we determined that it is our contractor, Bright Star Health, that actually needs to execute this agreement, as they will be the entity administering the vaccines and handling the documentation necessary for St. Louis County Health Department. So we're working to execute that today, and we'll report back to you at our next Operations Committee meeting in May, hopefully with great success on the first round of vaccination appointments that are going to be held at our Missouri operating facilities. To date, we have recorded 829 of our team members vaccinated and counting. Any questions about that? Thank you.
Thanks for that explanation. We look forward to hearing more about it at the next Operations Committee meeting. Can I have a call for future meeting dates, please, Myra?
Yes, the next meeting of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee will be held on Friday, May 21st at 8:30 a.m., followed by the Operations Committee meeting on the same day at 9:30. The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, June 25th at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you. AFA Committee Chair Zimmerman submitted a written executive session report, and the only items that were open for consideration are the, on the agenda of the executive session, were the approval of the minutes of the February 19th, 2021 Board of Commissioners Executive Session Meeting and approval of the minutes of the March 19th, 2021 Special Meeting of the Board Commissioner Executive Session. If there are no corrections to these minutes, and there's no discussion regarding these minutes, we could proceed to a vote without going into executive session today. That's the only item on the executive session agenda. Are there any objections? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the February 19th, 2021 Board of Commissioners Executive Session as presented as a closed record. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I'm sorry, we will need a roll call for this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Pastello?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. The next item would be a motion to approve the minutes of the March 19th, 2021 Special Meeting of the Board of Commissioners Executive Session as presented as a closed record. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I think a roll call is needed for this as well.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello?
Aye.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. If there is no further business before the board today, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you, everybody. Good job.
Good. Good to see everyone. It's a quick meeting today.